To the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. On this October 4th morning. So we know that call is on the way. You're going to do. Commissioner Gosar?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson, not yet here, and obviously Commissioner Ibera here. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's open up with the public hearing for the food zoning change, LUC dash zero eight dash twenty two. We'll start in the room. Anyone here with comments for the food zoning change? How about online? Anyone have any comments for the public hearing of the food zoning change? Okay, not seeing anyone who wants to make a comment. I would entertain a motion from Commissioner Gosar to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Ibera, I move to close the public hearing on the food zoning change.
Seconded that. All in favor of closing the public hearing for the food zoning change? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now open for comments from the public. We'll begin here in the room. Are there any comments from the public? Yes?
Hello, Misses. Chad, County Fire Warden. As of this morning, we are lifting the countywide fire restrictions. So I just want to make that announcement. Anyone that is interested in doing open burning, please contact my office or Lerni Dispatch Center prior to doing so.
Thank you, Chad.
That is all. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Anyone online with comments? For us this morning? I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move that we close the public comment period.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the comments from the public. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. All right. Commissioner Richardson, any disclosures this morning?
I have none.
Commissioner Gosar?
None for me, thank you.
And I have none. Are there any changes to the agenda this morning?
Hi. Sorry. Wait. Good morning, Commissioner Ibera and Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Gosar. I would like to remove this morning the executive session that is on item number thirty five. We are not quite ready for it.
The session removed.
That's welcome.
I know. I thought.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was made aware late last week that Albany County will be receiving some more federal funding. It's considered Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. It does stem down from ARPA, but I do need to bring this to you as a discussion for today.
Okay. We would like to close that until then they're not having a hang.
I'm here all meeting anybody.
You are, so. Then we'll go ahead and put that as item three hundred. Okay, the changes keep coming.
I know. Sorry, we were notified yesterday morning from the city clerk asking if we could add on a letter to approve the government to use their licenses, city limits, one more time. It's on the agenda already for a different event. This is an additional event that they have on the seventeenth of October, so it would miss the meeting, our next meeting. They asked up the.
And which one is that on our agenda?
Twenty three, I think, is the first one that we have for it, so.
Can we just make that twenty three B?
And here's this for the review, too, so you have that one here as the item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda this morning? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We've seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. First item on the agenda is to discuss coffee cart in the courthouse. Tori?
Thank you. Sorry, I was struggling. I just wanted to circle back around. And well, first, I guess I wanted to say hi to everybody. I planned to be there in person, but I caught my daughter's cold, so I didn't want to be there hacking along. But we had addressed this a while ago, and I wanted to circle back around and see if there was interest in having me proceed before I go forth with, you know, forming an LLC and buying the coffee cart and those sorts of things. I wanted to get some idea from all of you if it's something that you're interested in having me do, and if so, what process you would like to follow for me to be able to do that.
Commissioner, do you have any questions for Tori?
I created a little kind of flyer that I sent to Kayla, so I don't know if she shared it with all of you yet, but feel free to take a look at it.
Yeah. Well, Tori, it's good to see you.
Thanks.
I like the idea. It will definitely make the courthouse more welcoming to our own employees and the public. The economics of it, you know, that's for the private. That's for the business owner to endeavor to do. I don't know. I guess the only question I would ask is this. You know, basically what the business arrangements would be associated with that, what a contract looks like. I mean.
Sure.
From my perspective, I don't even, I don't really care.
And I tossed out a proposal of a rental arrangement, but I'm really open to exploring ideas. I don't, I certainly don't want to make it difficult on the county at all. It would, it would simply be the location, and I would make sure that I passed all the inspections and I was insured and those sorts of things. But it's, but my, my only idea, my only desire for a location is inside the courthouse, so obviously if that wasn't something you all were interested in, then I don't want to pursue it because I'm not interested in having it be elsewhere.
Commissioner Gosar, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Tori, good morning, and good morning, everybody. Just like to know what it'll look like. I know you have an example of the kiosk cart, but I'm not sure that's the one you're going to go with, or if it's just an example. And then just a little more of the technical details of, of what that looks like as far as rental. I think there was something in there about ten percent of net profits, two hundred and fifty dollars per month in the flyer. I don't know if that was just an opening salvo, or if that's what you had thought about, but I'm not against the idea, just a little more detail about what, what the final might look like and what the arrangement might look like. Thank you.
Sure, sure. I appreciate those questions. I'm actually completely open to whatever the aesthetics of the cart or kiosk would look like, and I actually was hoping that the commissioners or, you know, the clerk's office, somebody would be involved in helping select something that goes with the general aesthetics of the courthouse. I want it to look as though it belongs and look as though it's professional and appropriate. So I don't have any personal concern or care on what it looks like, other than making sure it fits in the right location. I thought I could work with Roy on selecting the exact correct location, but I would defer to really whatever all of you wanted it to look like. And then the rental idea, you're right, it's completely a proposal. I'm, I'm trying to gather information on what I think the, the economics would be of the cart. I don't imagine it's going to be, you know, raking in millions of dollars. We have a limited amount of foot traffic in the courthouse and a limited amount of employees. So I just tossed that out as something that might be a good starting base. And it would be open to really, again, whatever you all are interested in doing. I'm not seeing this as being, you know, my retirement fund or a full-time job. It's just something I'm really kind of interested in, and I think it would make the courthouse, like Commissioner Richardson said, more kind of welcoming, and the feedback I've gotten from employees on all levels of the courthouse is it's something that they think would be a really nice thing to do and to have available.
Thanks, Tori. Just the size and the space, and just to make sure that it doesn't get in the way of ingress egress and all that stuff, but other than that, I mean, if it's your cart, I'm more than happy to let you figure out the design of your cart.
That's, again, I would rely on Roy to help me with size and selection, and I thought the same thing. Definitely want to make sure we're not affecting the flow of traffic or safety concerns or anything like that. The only thing I absolutely need to have access to is electricity. Water is nice, but it, there's lots of ways to use kind of portable five gallon water jugs and still be able to pass all the required health and safety inspections. But electricity, we don't want a generator there. It'd be loud and obnoxious, so that's my really only need.
Tori, I have a few questions. Good morning to you.
Good morning.
First one, where are you thinking about wanting to locate this cart?
I had a couple of ideas, actually. My, my first thought was on the Iverson side, on the, on the ground level, kind of where the Christmas tree goes, but I don't want to interfere with the Christmas tree. And then I'd also thought on the higher level, I guess, the second floor, so to speak, that there, there's some room up there. But that's, again, where I wanted to really talk to folks and Roy in particular, and see what his thoughts were on the best placement for it.
And then do you foresee yourself hiring people to help out, or will you always be mandated, and then will they actually be, you know, follow everything that as far as your licensing and whatever is needed to run this little P O?
Sure, I, I would, at the beginning, I would be there more often than not, because I would want to make sure that it was running smoothly and that things were going well, and to get feedback from folks on what they're looking for, what they want, what they don't want. But once that learning curve has kind of run its course, then my thought was to have perhaps college students, and definitely in the summer, or as possible high school students. I think you all know I have two teenagers, and one already expressed a desire to have her summer employment be there, if possible. So ultimately, it would be hiring, you know, a couple of young people, and yes, I would make sure that they complied with any requirements for me, which is why I would set up an LLC and make sure that I had, you know, the proper, you know, taxing ability and salary ability, those sorts of things, including insurance and making sure we passed health and safety.
And finally, Tori, you labeled it the scoop of the day, so any chance of, in the summertime, there being scoops of ice cream?
Now you're talking. I, I love that idea. I, I wanted to start off pretty simple because my, my thought was, as we started to essentially take a poll of employees and customers and see what sorts of things they're interested in having there. I don't want to have a lot of waste, but I also thought maybe, you know, breakfast burritos in the wintertime and like easy salads that are pre-made, those sorts of things. So I love the scoop of ice cream idea. Who doesn't like a good scoop of ice cream in July?
Okay, any other questions or concerns, comments for Tori?
The devil's in details, but we're open to it, so we might as well.
I think we're all open to it, Tori, so.
Wonderful. I just didn't want to do anything more until I knew just that much. So now I will go back to my business plan and start finalizing details, and I'll revisit with you all.
Sounds great. Thanks, Tori.
Thank you so much for your time.
Let's move on to item nine, request a six thousand dollar pledge from Albany County for the twenty twenty-two United Way of Albany County Campaign to raise five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all. I am here to request a six thousand dollar pledge to match employee donations to the United Way of Albany County campaign that will run through now until the end of the year. The money that we raise goes and supports a community nonprofit and efforts to help in health, financial security, and education for our community. Just to give you a number, last year, the nonprofits who received grants from United Way reached about thirty percent of our population. That's, that's my request. Any questions that I can answer?
Commissioner, any questions?
I would just say we've, we've done this before, so. Yes. I guess the only item information we can decide where everybody comes from, it's probably because of general purpose, even fifth penny. She's thinking. Do you agree? Okay. I'd love to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that we that we award a nine thousand dollar pledge from Albany County to the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two United Way of Albany County Campaign to raise five hundred and forty-five thousand.
That seemed very generous, seeing how she's only asked for six thousand.
What did I say?
I mean, I won't, I won't argue.
I must be dyslexic, like, that's an upside down lie. Anyway, to raise six thousand dollars from Albany County, paid out of the fifth cent general purpose sales tax.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a six thousand pledge from Albany County for the twenty twenty-two United Way of Albany County Campaign. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I think Tori should name her cart, spill the tea.
Okay, item ten, proclaim October twenty-third, twenty twenty-two through October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness week. Do we have Amy?
Commissioner Ibera, I, I probably can handle this.
Okay.
Mr. Firestein reached out to me and had discussed this proclamation that is going out throughout the United States, bringing awareness to childhood cancer. And, you know, the, the stats are in there. More than sixteen thousand of our nation's young people, and then four hundred thousand are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. This person, Mr. Firestein, was impacted personally by, by cancer. One of his kids, as I remember, and so this would just join Albany County, the commission, in, in support of the Childhood Cancer Awareness Week.
Well, as representing Kids Cancer Connection, the organization that Stephen works with, Dr. Amy Firestein, and I'm the Patient Services Director. So I just want to thank Albany County Chairman Gosar and the County Commissioners for supporting Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Children with cancer need a lot of support via their families, medically, and from the community. And raising awareness about childhood cancer is a large part of this, and that's what we're doing here today. The children are brave, strong, and determined, as are their families and loved ones, and they have to be to face this battle. So through our work at Kids Cancer Connection, and it's in association with the support of governments, we're able to further assist these amazing children and their families. So again, thank you for honoring these children and offering your support in the battle against childhood cancer. And we can only hope that one day we won't need to issue this type of proclamation. So thank you so much.
Dr. Firestein, thank you so much for being with us this morning. Commissioner Gosar, would you like to read the proclamation in its entirety, please?
We're, a proclamation in support of Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States. This tragic disease is detected in more than sixteen thousand of our nation's young people each and every year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. An estimated four hundred thousand children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas founded nearly thirty years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetic Family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., along with Lions Club International, are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at the Intermountain Primary Children's Hospital, Shriners Children's Salt Lake City, the Billings Clinic Hospital, the Children's Hospital of Colorado, Rocky Mountain Children's Hospital at Presbyterian, St. Luke's in Denver, Rocky Mountain Pediatric Hematology Oncology in Casper, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsored Tory distributions, family sailing programs, positive appearance programs, afternoon laughter is healing, pet assisted therapy, KCC supercar experience, educational programs and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Therefore, be it resolved, we, the Albany County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October twenty-third, twenty twenty-two through October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week, recognizing the significant strides that need to take place to alleviate this tragic disease in witness whereof. We have on here to set our hands in the officialcy of Albany County to be affixed this fourth day of October, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Commissioner Gosar. I'd entertain a motion to proclaim October twenty-third, twenty twenty-two through October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Commissioner Ibera, I'd like to thank the Firesteins for making me aware and sending the information about this really important week of recognition, so thank you.
And thank you again, Dr. Firestein, for being here with us.
It was my pleasure.
Okay, let's move on to item eleven, proclaim the week of October second through eighth, twenty twenty-two as National Four H Week. Mary Louise, good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, the four H year begins October first, and so we're three days into it. National Four H Week is October second to the eighth. I did want to give you a couple of highlights from Albany County Four H. This last year, we had over four hundred and seventy-six members, one hundred and thirteen volunteers. I can tell you that those volunteers, in their time that they donate to Albany County, there's over three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of time and services that they donate to our young people, because without them, we don't have a program. We have people in the room here, Tracy, Nisa, Kayla, that their kids are in the Four H program. We have three champion judging teams in Albany County. Also, we have the champion fashion review young lady, and we also have the champion public speaker. So Albany County, we're very blessed. And so those are some of our highlights. And then I present to you a proclamation that declares October second to eighth National Four H Week within Albany County.
Okay, it'll need to get in on the proclamation here, since the week already started, huh?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you for all you do, and I know you have lots out there for these programs, and wonderful, and so much opportunity, so many opportunities for our young people, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, but I'm the one that's blocked.
Commissioner Richardson, could I ask you to read the proclamation?
Yes. I don't have any, but I do now. So I'll make the motion first. I move that we proclaim the week of October second through October eighth, twenty twenty-two as National Four H Week.
Second.
Would you like to read that?
Yes. Whereas four H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference for their future. Whereas four H is one of the largest youth development organizations in Wyoming, and the largest in the nation with over six million young people. Whereas four H in Wyoming claims six thousand nine hundred seventy-seven youth members and nine hundred seventy-eight adult volunteers, while Albany County's four H program numbers, more than four hundred seventy members and more than one hundred and four volunteers. Whereas four H, as part of the University of Wyoming Extension, is a program where youth learn opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in four H's mission mandates of science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, and citizenship. Whereas research continues to prove that young people who are involved in four H are twice as likely to plan to attend college, more likely to avoid risky behaviors, more likely to contribute to their communities, and more involved in leadership roles for the future than those not engaged in four H. Now, therefore, we, Pete Gosar, Sue Ibera, and Eber Richardson, members of the Albany County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October second through eighth, twenty twenty-two as National Four H Week in Albany County. We urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interests in their futures as part of Albany County Four H Youth Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state university system. Indeed, it's good that we are the seat of all of the extensions, and that we get the, you know, the, the synergy that comes from being in, you know, an education community where the University of Wyoming is. It was interesting to me to, to see that a hundred of the nine hundred volunteers are here when there's twenty-three counties. We have a disproportionate number, probably, of people involved in it, so that's good.
Seems that way, but we have very special.
Yes.
And Commissioner Richardson, you read those numbers beautifully. No dyslexia in there.
Well, we weren't appropriate.
All right, there's a motion to proclaim the week of October second through the eighth, twenty twenty-two as National Four H Week. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Present for approval agreement for consultant services between Albany County, Wyoming, and Hub International Mountain States Limited, amount to twenty-two thousand per year. John Martin.
Good morning, Commissioner Bar. I'm virtually. Can everybody hear me all right?
You can.
All right. Well, first off, I appreciate the opportunity to attend virtually. I had attended for my account manager, Erin Maturi, to attend with me. She got a Zoom link that was working. Mine was not working. She sent me hers, and so you might see me labeled now as Erin. So I'm kind of, kind of hiding up here, but no, on September eighth, we met with the health insurance management team to go over the, the health plan renewal, as well as present the consulting agreement, as well as the business associate's agreement. And so we're here to, to get that approved and answer any questions that you guys may have for us.
Thank you, John. Any questions, Commissioners?
Commissioner Bar. Yeah, thank you. John, I'm looking at the type of services rendered. Could you tell me a little bit about how many hours? Could you tell me a little bit about how many hours per month or year that this service really takes from you guys?
Sure, I can tell you that depending on how the plan runs, it can be fairly labor-intensive to do the data analytics for the plan, as well as the employee meetings. I will point out, I don't have, Chairman Gosar, I don't have an exact number for you in the way that this was quantified. What I can tell you is that we took the contract from Bob Decker that was the incumbent, and we did not, it was not our intent to change anything from the scope of services that Bob was doing for the county. And so we did keep those parameters the same. And so I guess I don't have an hour number to quantify, other than to say there's no upward limit on the amount of hours that we can work on this for you within the scope of the agreement. And it's, you know, if there's something that you guys would like to add or receive, maybe even taken away from the contract and to work on that number, that'd be certainly something we're open to.
Thanks, John. And just a couple of follow-ups. How many bidders do you typically get? And I know this is probably your first year. How many bidders did you get for the health insurance? And then do you guys also negotiate the rider over the top so that the catastrophic policy that limits the losses to the county?
Correct. So with the current Cigna, the current Cigna arrangement, Cigna is the stop-loss carrier within the plan. Now, we did not receive a request to go out to bid this year, but I can tell you in a year that we do send out RFPs and receive bids, you know, a typical submission would go to between seven and nine stop-loss carriers. What we would attempt to do then is to bring it down to three for a finalist presentation to the Health Insurance Management Team. And so, you know, being a year that we did not go out to bid, we didn't get those numbers. But I would say that's fairly typical. We want to send the seven to nine stop-loss carriers and then narrow it down from there for presentation.
And then the final one, John, is just thinking about economies of scale. If, for instance, are there any places in Wyoming that the city and the county might co-join on a insurance policy similar to this? I'm not saying it would happen in Albany County. I just want to know if that's possible and if that exists somewhere else.
So it's not something a chairman and I have seen done for, I think, a multitude of reasons and for lack of a better term, politics that could, you know, complicate such an agreement. Basically, what that would be, we'd be constituting a multiple employer welfare arrangement. And that would be something that could be explored, but I'm not sure I'm not sure at the end of the day that goals would align. If they did align, it could be something we could look at, at joining, but I guess I haven't had that request before to join a county and a city government's health insurance.
Thanks, John. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Any other questions for John? Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item twelve as presented.
Second.
I move to second it to approve the agreement for consultant services between Albany County, Wyoming, and Hub International Mountain States Limited in the amount of twenty-two thousand. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Present for approval business associate agreement between Hub International Mountain States and those employee welfare benefit plans of Albany County. John, you're up again.
All right. So the business associate agreement, we'll call it the BAA, is an agreement between Hub and the county, binds us as business associates, and essentially it allows the transmission of protected health information between our two entities for the purposes of our partnership. And so it's essentially a HIPAA agreement protecting, an agreement to exchange that information securely in binding us as business associates that would allow us to exchange that information so that we can have access to that PHI when in the course of our duties as consultants, that becomes necessary.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioners? I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve item thirteen as requested, or as presented, excuse me.
Second.
Move to second it that we approve the business associate agreement between Hub International Mountain States and those employee welfare benefits plans of Albany County. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, John. I just show up one more time, huh? Present for approval the application for amended group coverage.
Sure. So this is simply the signature pages for Cigna and the acceptance of the renewal. Now, this year, we did not, the Health Insurance Management Team did not recommend any plan changes. So it's referred to as amended group coverage, but really all we're amending is the plan effective dates. So these are the signature pages that Cigna requires to begin building the plan for the new plan year.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Did I have a motion?
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented.
Second.
I move to second it that we approve the application for amended group coverage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thanks again, John.
Thank you all, and we will see you in Laramie on the November sixteenth for the health fairs.
Have a good day.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Item fifteen, discounted application of American Rescue Act funds for the use of Albany County fire district number one and three assistance program. Great, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this item was brought to you nine months ago at this point, and it kind of fell on the radar, to be honest. Last we have met, you guys had asked about possibly tying this in with the county's EAP. We talked with Christina about that. We found it out. What Luke was originally looking at, it would be a hundred and fifty dollars per session, so six sessions a year per person, so a hundred and four people for three years, totaling two hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred dollars. So Luke's here today, and he's going to come up. He has also maybe found a couple ways to save some money on this request.
Morning, Commissioners. Yeah, we've been working pretty diligently at this. You know, as you know, first responders can suffer a lot of traumatic emotional, mental issues. And wellness is a big priority for us, is taking care of our families. I brought with me today Kevin McIntyre. He's part of the duo between Tim Snowberger and himself as the chaplains. They work with us as volunteers. They work with Laramie Fire Department. They work with Laramie PD. They do an excellent job. One of the things, though, that we've identified is as we're trying to work through this EAP, you know, we looked at the traditional EAP through insurance and tried to use Christina and the county as an EAP program. And just like Bailey laid out, that hundred and fifty dollars per session is pretty typical for three sessions per member, per year, equating to a partnership for six. And so, you know, we kind of used generic numbers, and that's how we got to that two hundred and eighty thousand. There's been a lot of focus on this recently, especially going through the pandemic years, that there's been a lot of emotional trauma, and a lot of things have really come out from that. And so there's a lot of other programs that they're trying to basically subsidize, you know, to get a better program. One of the things that Kevin pointed out to me recently was that as we started to scratch the service of our volunteers, we realized how much this has been lacking in our area. And we started to see that it was, in some cases, much more than the capabilities of our chaplains. They do a great job. They're not trained therapists. They, Kevin is a retired Laramie Fire Department engineer. I worked with him. We share a lot of we share a lot of work stories together. And so he's able to touch out to these volunteers on a very personal level, and he realized very early that it's beyond his training. And so that helped to kind of provide a motivation to move forward. I've reached out to an organization that's in Colorado called Building Warriors. It's a nonprofit. They also work with Foundation Twenty-Ten-Twenty-Three that is also a nonprofit. What they do is they work specifically with first responders, police, and fire, and EMTs, paramedics. And they provide in-house services. That is, they provide what they call a critical incident stress briefing, it's the same type of thing that Tim Snowberger and Kevin McIntyre have been trained to do. After a major event, they can bring those crews together. They can talk about those and start working through that emotional process of how to heal from it. And start to try to normalize, you know, what effects that we all have from some of these calls that we go through. It's a really good first step. And what it does is it initiates a cost savings because we're able to do that at a group level, and then they're also able to train the trainers. And what I mean by that is Building Warriors is able to provide training for volunteers that are willing to provide a peer support. So it's kind of that next level where, you know, Kevin McIntyre and Tim Snowberg reach out after an incident. There are two guys that are able to reach out to, you know, potentially five to fifteen people, start that process. We have in-house people at that point. If we can, you know, make a contract with Building Warriors, and then they're able to identify what's the next step. Now can we go into a therapist where then it's at a hundred and fifty dollars per hour? So it's a way to start really touching more people and reducing the cost and being able to find that intermediate between what's needed. Do we need to just go straight to therapy, or can we start out at this level first? They've had super positive results across the nation through these type of programs. And what I'm looking from for you guys is basically an amendment to say that I can move forward. Building Warriors is not currently in Wyoming, so I have to create that bridge to Wyoming with licensing across the state line. Typically, their contracts are under ten thousand dollars to initiate. And then from there, there's a training involved. And then CISD, if we bring in a therapist to do those, or if we do those in houses, they're usually about a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars per session. So it's a much, much reduced cost. I do not want to take away any ability to still continue having those EAP sessions in terms of if they need therapy, we want to provide that for them. But this would start that process at a much lower cost level. So again, what I'm looking for from kind of Commissioners at this point is the ability for us to get together and get hard numbers for you guys. But to do that, I need to be able to tell Building Warriors, Ten-Twenty-Three, hey, we do have funding to do this. I need the hard numbers to get it across the state line. Once we have that, then we will be able to open that up for the whole state. So it's a big deal, and it's a great program. Laramie Fire Department would be able to utilize those resources. Laramie PD would be able to utilize those resources. It's a lot like the chaplaincy program that Tim Snowberger and McIntyre are working through right now, Rocky Mountain Chaplains. Highway Patrol uses it. So it's a big deal, and we really appreciate your support. But I'm open to any question.
Thank you. Let's hear from Mr. McIntyre.
Well, I'll just introduce myself. As Luke said, I'm Kevin McIntyre. I retired from the Laramie Fire Department in twenty-eighteen. I was there since nineteen ninety-three. I came to Laramie in nineteen ninety-three to join the team there in Laramie. I left two years early because I was suffering from a mental health crisis, or mental brain injury. So the only reason why I'm standing here today is because of this process through EAP and family and support. I was on the peer support team when I left in twenty-eighteen, and I had the ability to help others, but I didn't help myself. I didn't recognize the problem until it was too late. So I ended up retiring a little earlier than I anticipated. Stayed on the peer support team. I went and healed the things that were going on in my life and with my family. A blessing, I was able to keep my family, keep my life, and continue living in Laramie and pouring back into the support team. And August August second of this year, Tim Snowberger introduced me to the Fire Department as the second chaplain for the Laramie Fire Department as a volunteer position. It's something that I've always wanted to do. In twenty-fourteen, I recognized the need for the Laramie Fire Department in town to have a chaplain. I know the police department had several chaplains. I believe the sheriff's department had chaplains, the fire department, and the history of our department never had a chaplain. So I started doing the legwork and the paperwork. The chief was a hundred percent supportive, but it fell on me. And through HR and myself, my last call to duty or the last action I had as a member of the Fire Department is interviewing and giving Tim the opportunity to be our chaplain at the Fire Department. Like I said, just two months ago or three months ago, I was introduced as the second chaplain. I've gone through a lot of peer support training. We went to the first mental health, mental health, what would I say, training in Casper the end of August, and then the first of September, we attended our second Rocky Mountain Fire, Rocky Mountain Police Fire Chaplains Association meeting and became members of their organization down in Colorado. And they're really trying to get into Wyoming as well. I've networked with a chaplain for the Highway Patrol out of Douglas. I'm trying to network with Casper and trying to get a statewide thing going that if there's an incident in Casper, not only do they have their locals, but they can call out to us, and we can respond if needed for them, as well as the participants in their fire department and first responders, things like that. I've been talking to Luke about this for, well, for a long time, even when we were on the department together, but real seriously lately, on just the need, I have met with a couple of the county volunteer departments. And I've had people approach me after my meeting, just introducing, I introduced myself, what I bring to the table, how I could help, what I've been through. And I've had people say, okay, if we come talk to you, you recognize a need for EAP. Who's paying for that? How do we get that? And that's where I met with Luke, and was like, we got to get something going so these people have access to the EAP without self-funding. So that's why I'm here today, to support this and to offer any of my assistance as a chaplain here in Laramie to the Commissioners or the county or anything like that.
Well, Kevin, I'm so happy for you that you're in a better place personally.
Thank you.
And kudos to you and Tim for wanting to do something here and help others and all this. Mental health is such a serious issue, and I know it's such a passion for many of you. I know it has been for you too, Luke. So I commend you for working together and wanting to move forward on something that's really real for a change.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioners, any questions for either Luke or Kevin?
I don't have any. I do have a couple of comments. One is I suppose over time, we've learned that people who help other people need some help themselves. There's a it's hard if you're in that business, you know, and you go to work and pull a kid out of an abusive home or, you know, in pieces out of a wrecked car, and then you go home to kiss your babies in their beds while they're sleeping, you know? It's hard for a person's mind and heart to do that, and they need some care in that regard. Yep. And I don't, you know, I have a lot of women in my family, a lot of sisters. I have nine sisters. Women process things differently than men do. Men tend to internalize these things and just keep going because that's how we're wired, and it doesn't always work out for the best if you try to stack years and years together of that sort of thing. And then we have the challenge that, you know, in the Fire District and on the volunteer departments in the north end of the county, we're talking about volunteers, right? People who want to serve their community, and they're not specifically trained to deal with these kinds of things, and maybe that support network isn't there. But this is something near and dear to me. I'm happy to support this today. So I'm ready to get on with it.
Commissioner Gosar.
Yeah, thank you, guys, for bringing this awareness, and I just have administration questions, quite honestly. So I understand bringing people in after an event into a group setting. And so are the, are the mental health counselors in Colorado? Is this a telehealth request or would there be training for local mental health providers? Any, any ideas about any of that stuff?
Yeah, great question. So the way that this would work is, is because it's cross-state lines, you know, they're, the therapists that are down in Colorado right now, they can operate up in Wyoming. I've had this conversation with, with, actually I'm, I'm a member of, of a couple of different peer support teams in Colorado currently. So I've reached out different, to try to figure out how to get it here. The best avenue that, or the best plan forward that we believe is basically to reach out to the therapist that we already have here in, in Laramie. And I've, I've already talked to a couple of therapists here. They're on board. They want to move forward with it. Basically what we do then is we use Building Warriors as that parent group business, that nonprofit, to basically facilitate how those therapists are going to be able to perform those C S I Ds internally in Albany County. And then also how they would train our members here that live here and, and, and serve here in the Fire Department or the police department, or how that team would look. So the way it typically works is that you have an oversight therapist, a coordinator, that would have other therapists that aren't quite hands-on, but they're trained more in what we experience as first responders. Because, you know, a first responder that's suffering from, I guess Commissioner Heath Richardson pointed out, you know, when we, when we run a call that has especially pediatric traumas, those are very difficult. And so when we tried to work through or process through those with, with a therapist, it's most beneficial to have somebody that already has that experience. Maybe is married to a firefighter or a police, a, a police officer or is able to have that personal connection to understand what it's like to have that transition period from home to work, from home to work. Now, one of the big things that we, is, is a huge challenge for volunteer agencies across the nation is they don't have a long transition period. You know, when, when, when the Laramie Fire Department guys come on shift, they're working in two days on, four days off, a forty-eight ninety-six. They might have that traumatic call at the beginning of their shift and they have thirty hours to process through it with their brothers and sisters at work. And that's, that's a good thing to be able to have that open communication and process through that. But if they have it late in their shift and they don't have very much time to process through it. Our volunteers will work these calls, you know, whether they're in their neighbor's homes or on a eighty. But they leave that incident and they typically will either go right back to work or they'll go right home. They go on about their business. There's a very, very small transitional period. And what they're discovering is that this is, this is highly detrimental. That we need to be able to, to be, to, to get those members, those responders back into a situation where they can talk through everything that happened. And there's a lot of data that supports being able to talk through each thing. You know, what did you do? How did you do that? What is your experience? Going through each of those incidences is highly beneficial. So we're, I mean, as it is right now, we are kind of starting from the ground up as, as Albany County Fire District One. We've not had this before, but we're recognizing, we knew it was a need. But as we scratch the surface more, we're recognizing how much of a need it is and how much some of this, this trauma is going back years and years and years. Some of our volunteers have been doing this for twenty to thirty or even more years. And they're starting to revisit some of those calls and those conversations from decades ago. And it's, it's extremely challenging now. It's like, well, we need to, we need to figure this out. Sorry, I went on a tangent, but administratively, the therapist would be a coordinator from Building Warriors. They would work through a couple of therapists locally and then train peer support members with inside of our own district. And then we had operate those C S I Ds ideally after, soon after an incident occurs. And, and, and then go from there. From that C S I D, in my experience, if I've had, if I've run a C S I D with, you know, ten or fifteen people, two or three from that, that debriefing will come back and say, my bucket's full. I'm, I'm over the top. I need to go see somebody else. And that's, that's what I'm fearful of is that we're going to start getting, you know, Kevin and Tim out there and, and starting to conduct some of these, reach out and then we're going to get members that are saying, hey, my bucket's full. What, what do I do now? And we're not going to have an answer for it, plain answer.
Thanks, Luke. And, and just led me to the, to my next conversation was if somebody needs nine or a dozen, does your plan address that? If somebody needs just a couple of sessions or somebody needs a whole year of sessions, would that be flexible in your planning?
That's a great question. It's, it's not. It's, it's a really hard discussion to have, even with career fire departments, clear, career police departments, insurance companies, how do we manage through that? Traditionally speaking, a contract through Building Warriors or, or an organization like that will get you the first three, three sessions, three donations of a foundation like ten twenty-three. Then an E A P such as ARPA would be able to provide another three sessions for that individual. From there, it kind of goes on to insurance. If that individual has insurance, then you've got kind of documentation saying that this is an injury that occurred and we need to be able to support that. But honestly, there's not a good answer. It's across the board, you'll see Fire Department contracts that support three, six, some of them support twelve. Some of them support basically one per member of household. Some of them are just six per household. It's, it's all across the board. From my perspective, I'd like to be able to have kind of that original plan of having a, a pool of money that supports or is budgeted specifically for E A P. We get through that first year and half of our members didn't use it. We're able to basically carry that over and support those people that do need those extra six, seven, eight, nine, ten sessions or whatever. I don't know how that works administratively. I, I hope Bailey and I can work that out, but, but the first step for me is basically hearing a commitment that like, yes, we will put money towards that. We know that Building Wars or something is going to be an initial ten to twenty thousand dollars. We're good with that. It's a tenth of what, you know, originally asked for. And then let's get those numbers hard lined and, and, and figure out the next, you know, two hundred thousand dollars or whatever it's going to take to support our people for the next three years.
Thanks, Luke. And, and yeah, incredibly supportive of the idea just to have seen the plan. I know you have the plan figured out somewhere, but at this point, I, I love the idea. I think it's useful and I think it's a, a really needed service. And then just giving us that plan would be super, would allow me to be able to understand exactly what the project is, not that you haven't been clear. I just kind of want to understand exactly how it is when we go to, to approve a, a budget request.
Awesome. I will get that plan for you.
Luke, I have a couple of questions or just a question, sort of piggyback on Commissioner Gosar's questions because those were mine as well. Does this plan have, well, I guess, within this program, is there a plan if through so many sessions of counseling and all, it's recognized that maybe an individual volunteer has, is unable to perform any further as a volunteer? Is that, how is that going to be doubtful?
That's a great question. And honestly, even in the career departments, they haven't figured out how to address that question. And, and the reason why is because of, of a physical injury, you can, you can see, you can document, you can run data. You can say, you know, the back is injured and they can't pick this up and so therefore they can't perform their duties. A mental health injury is a real injury. But it's a very subjective injury. And so honestly, there is nothing currently that I'm aware of that says this is how you do that or this is how you do that. So I can't answer that question. It is, is a very hot topic in our industry right now. And there's a lot of pushback on it both ways. Yeah, I can't, I don't have an answer for you.
Thank you. Again, obviously there's support here for the commission to move forward and all. And I commend you guys, kudos to you, the three of you as well as Mr. Snowburger and everybody involved who's interested in getting down to some really good business about mental health.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I would like to say that the, the lack of certainty, you know, sometimes we want to get our minds around everything from the beginning to the end. It's kind of our job, but I'm, I'm okay with, with starting down a path and seeing what shakes out from it. You know, in terms of utilization and all that stuff, because if you don't, we have to offer it. You know, there's going to be some give and take or back and forth as we figure out how to take care of our people.
Thank you. I'll get that plan for you and I'll get with Bailey and we'll get the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sixteen, present for approval, I'm sorry, ratify grant application to the Wyoming Department of Health Behavioral Health Division Grant Program through the American Rescue Act. ARPA funding amount not restricted to under five thousand for law enforcement, mental health support services. Aaron, good segue.
Yeah, good morning. Yeah. This is to ratify a grant application with the Wyoming Department of Health. And our grant application is very similar to what Luke just presented on as well. We, we wanted to institute basically a, a mental health program with our own agency. Because our, our deputies also come across a lot of traumatic incidents as well. Where our application differs a little bit, it's the funding source, obviously, is through the Wyoming Department of Health. Having money available there through Senate File sixty-six to Divi, to first responders, mental health services. We, our plan is to have mandatory critical incident debriefs on about eight different calls that we come across fairly regularly. And then also start a peer support group as well. The mental health professionals that we use would be licensed in Wyoming in making this grant application possible. We reached out to a lot of our local mental health providers here in Laramie, also in Cheyenne as well, so that we didn't have to worry about the licensing. So we would be utilizing those mental health providers for those critical incidents. And then this, this grant application also provides some supplemental therapy sessions for our people outside of what's already provided through county health insurance. Our E A P program, supplemental E A P program that we have. And so this, this would add additional ones just for those people that, that, that need extra sessions to be covered outside of what's already covered. That grant application was submitted, it was due by September thirty, it was submitted last week sometime, so. So yeah, we're just asking you guys to ratify, ratify our grant application and then I'm confident, I don't know if Bailey is, but I'm confident that we'll receive our plan from the Department of Health and then be able to.
Commissioners, any question for Aaron?
Pretty straightforward.
Thanks Sheriff Applehands for recognizing this and, and being willing to submit a grant. It's really thorough. It was nice to read through and, and understand it and, and full support.
I have one question, Sheriff.
Go ahead.
I think in what I read, you hope to be sustaining in twenty twenty-six. What if not? Does this whole thing go away?
Well, I mean, essentially what we've done with their grant application for, for ARPA funding, but we want to sustain that program long-term. We get the funding, build the program and then at the same time as we're building and implementing the program, we continue to look for funding past basically the expiration date of that grant. That's that second process that we will start to do once we, if we're awarded that grant application, is to start looking for funding to prolong, prolong the program, so.
Good. Well, again, thank you for your efforts here and Beatty too, to address such a critical issue. County as well, information. So thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
I approve item sixteen as presented.
Second.
Second, to approve item sixteen as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner.
Item seventeen, present for approval, sub-recipient amendment one agreement between the Albany County Commissioners and Greater Wyoming Big Brothers Big Sisters for the relocation of TAP CPI twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three grant funding for services between the date of the executed grant agreement and September thirty of twenty twenty-three. Beatty?
It was brought to my attention that I actually had a typo in my Excel script. Luckily I've only brought three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars right there. But this amendment and then your next item is a resolution to address that. What I did to make it easy was I pulled those out of our grant administration fees that we were going to collect on this to give to Big Brothers Big Sisters because of my mistake.
Thank you. Any questions for Beatty? Entertained motion?
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented.
Second.
I move in second, we approve the sub-recipient amendment one agreement between Albany County Commissioners and Greater Wyoming Big Brothers Big Sisters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item eighteen, present for approval, amendment one to resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one one, resolution designated funding allocations to sub-receivables of Albany County twenty-two dash twenty-two, temporary assistance for needy families using partnership initiatives suffered.
Second part of that, we just have to amend the resolution.
And entertain a motion, Commissioners?
I move the, approve item seventeen as presented.
How about it, Beatty?
How about eighteen? I move that we approve item eighteen as presented.
Second.
The move in second is that we approve item eighteen as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is, thank you. Item nineteen, present for approval, request to conduct safe treat at the Albany County Courthouse on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And this is a good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. I'm here to request that we open the courthouse to Albany County youth to conduct a safe treat on October thirty-first from three to five p.m.
And will each of the departments be invited to decorate their area?
Yes, we would invite all departments to decorate and to welcome the trick-or-treaters in the courthouse and provide treats as we wish.
That means we'll be overwhelmed by cuteness. Like three-year-olds dressed up cute.
As a parent, I appreciate another safe place for my little ones to build the trick-or-treats.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve item nineteen as presented.
Second.
Move in second that we approve the request to conduct a safe treat at Albany County Courthouse on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Have fun.
Yeah, here's a question. How do we get the word out about that? I don't think there's a lot of kids reading our minutes.
I'll advertise on social media, send it to Albany County Four-H and this whole district to advertise that.
Perfect.
Super. That's great. Twenty, present for approval, sixty-month lease or purchase agreement with annual maintenance agreement with Midwest Connect, which shall include hardware, software, maintenance for the replacement of the current county postage machine. Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning, Commissioners. So before you today, I have either the lease option or a purchase option for a new mail machine. Our current mail machine is about to be decommissioned by the post office because of antiquated technology, lack of better. But the new machine will make the postage more accurate. They'll have more frequent automatic updates. Right now, the machine only updates probably about once every ninety days. This will be every seventy-two hours. The security should be stronger and then, well, the greater connectivity I discovered. So in the packet, I also included an analysis for you guys to review where the lease cost would be twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars over the five-year period. And then the purchase and then the maintenance agreement, which is eleven hundred ninety-nine per year, which would total over the five-year period, eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. So that's, to, just to kind of give you a summary, there's also the usage summary of what we do. Now that I'm, I know a lot of us do a lot of online stuff. Now, I take online payments. We have to mail all those registrations and corporate tax receipts out. We use a lot of postage. That is one of probably the, the biggest things we do in the morning in, in my office is. That is one of probably the biggest things we do in the morning in, in my office is because we put the postage on air, all the county mail that gets brought to our office. So it does take some time and if this machine is faster, that would be fabulous. But we're also teaching people like the gal from the attorney's office. Laura, thank you. I don't personally get to see her, so I don't call them. And some of the election staff is also because they do have a large filing going out this year, as we all know. I will happily answer any questions.
Yeah, I have one just to start out. Is this quote still valid?
Yes. Yeah. The representative, Joe, from Midwest Connect is aware that this was going to be on today's meeting and he is willing to still have that.
Commissioners, any questions for Tracy?
It's a way.
Excuse me, Commissioner Rich, I didn't mean to interrupt. Tracy, do these machines last typically five years? How long was the last machine in, in office, in your office, operational?
The last machine we purchased in, or leased in twenty eighteen, so due to the change in the technology that the post office is utilizing, that was a change there. But prior to that, we had the same mail machine since I was here. So nineteen years minus four, fifteen years. I think they're very comparable.
And then do you have a recommendation that seems to me pretty straightforward that the purchase is the way to go, but I might not know what's all included in the lease, even though you've been really good at sending all the information?
Initially, my recommendation would be to purchase because of the cost-effective nature of it. But after our discussion with the copiers yesterday at the elected official department head meeting, whether we wanted to lease or purchase those, I, I don't want to say I want to recommend a lease because I just would reconsider it, I guess. But within the leases, everything that the purchase agreement or the, I'm sorry, the maintenance contract would entail as well and the use of the equipment.
The lease includes the maintenance and if we purchase it, then we buy the maintenance contract. So for an apples-to-apples comparison, we have to see what the bottom line, you know, cost is either way.
Right. The lease does have that in there in the fifty-three hundred forty dollars per year. And then the maintenance contract out, if we're just purchasing the machine, would be eleven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So that's about forty-two hundred dollars towards the lease annually.
Right. So the difference between the maintenance contract, forty-two hundred bucks, and the lease, which was, what did you say, fifty-three hundred?
Fifty-three.
So eleven hundred bucks.
Right. The maintenance contract is eleven ninety-nine on the purchase, which I assume would be a similar factor within the lease. If they were two. But one of the, one of the things we brought up yesterday about the, whether to move, for Adam to move forward with the lease or purchase of our copiers and their bigger printer machines, what's, what do we do after we're not good anymore? And you, who wants to buy a postage machine?
Yeah, right. Doesn't have any residual value.
Exactly. Yes.
I don't know, does it? Apparently ours doesn't and it's only four years old.
Correct.
I remember getting that. The one before it was a ridiculous dinosaur, but very real. I don't know, was it reliable still or was it starting to give us issues?
It could have started to give us issues and I think it was also technology connectivity in those items that we're addressing again four years later.
It's planned obsolescence, so they can sell more in these four years.
One benefit with the lease too is at the end of the lease term, you perhaps can get a newer machine, does more things.
Right. Give it back.
That's why I love. Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, for, from, from my perspective, if we purchased it, looks like we get the maintenance and everything that's included in the lease. Plus, at the end of five years, if we had to pay somebody eight thousand dollars to take it off our hands, we'd still be five bucks ahead or, you know, forty-five bucks ahead. So I'm amenable to purchasing it. I don't know, maybe mail will change in the next five years, but, you know, eighteen-six versus twenty-six-seven is, is pretty compelling to me after five years.
Thank you, Commissioner Glaser. Are we ready to make a motion on this?
Yeah. I move that we purchase. That we approve a purchase agreement with the annual maintenance agreement with Midwest Connect, which will include hardware, software, and maintenance for the replacement of the current county postage machine.
Second.
Moved in second that we purchase this machine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Getting a new machine? All right. Item twenty-one, present for approval, approach license for Charles Hoskins County Road seven-twenty-one, Harris Park, Hotwood Park Road, located in section seven, township twenty-seven, North Range, seventy west of the sixth primary. Rob?
Morning Commissioners. This road is in the far northeast part of the county. So I have looked at where the dogs was going to be and stuff, no issues with it.
Commissioners, any questions for Rob this morning?
That road has like four cars a day on it. Except for during night, right?
I move we approve item twenty-one as presented.
Second.
The move in second, item twenty-one.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty-two, present for approval, utility license for Walden Gas Utility on County Road forty-three, Hornsby Road in the northeast corner section, nineteen, township fifteen, North Range seventy-four. Rob?
Commissioners, this is a utility license to add a gas line to property on Hornsby, which is out off of two-thirty. They're wanting to run a gas line to that big, used to be a roped arena. I don't know what they're using it for now, but it's a large building.
Commissioners, any questions for Rob?
I move that we approve item twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Sorry. Move in second that we approve the utility license for Walden Gas Utility on County Road forty-three, Hornsby Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item twenty-three, present for approval, letter to Nancy Bartholomew, Laramie City Clerk, to allow the Calverman to LLC doing business as Calverman Steakhouse to apply for a catering permit of Iverson Memorial Hospital Business After Hours located at two fifty-five North Thirty Street, Laramie, Wyoming on October sixth, twenty twenty-two, from five P M to seven thirty P M. Kaya, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is just a letter to the city council, or to the city clerk, to allow the Calverman to use their license within city limits, being their accounting liquor license. Pretty straightforward.
Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I move we approve item twenty-three as presented.
Second.
The move in second that we approve item twenty-three as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item twenty-three B, present for approval, letter to Nancy Bartholomew, Laramie City Clerk, to allow the Calverman to LLC doing business as Calverman Steakhouse to apply for a catering permit with the Wyoming Water Association Appreciation Bureau located at the Alice Hardy Student Center, six oh-three East University Avenue on October seventeen, twenty twenty-two, from four P M to eleven P M. Lots of appreciation going on, huh?
Lots of things going on in the community, so this is just the same as the previous, just a different event.
Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I move we approve item twenty-three B as presented.
Second.
The move in second that we approve this license, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Right. Item twenty-four, present for consideration, the Flutie zoning change application, LUC-dash-zero-eight-dash-twenty-two. Joe, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, the advocate is Michael Flutie, located at three fifty-three Roger Canyon Road. His request is to change zoning from agricultural to rural residential. Access is off of Roger Canyon Road and the purpose is they're requesting a zoning change from act rural residential to be able to subdivide into lots. There were some reviews, not many concerns. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Tolly Dyer had comments regarding soils and erosion. Perfor comments can be seen in the review section. The applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution are chapter three, section five, and chapter five, section five. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter three, section five F. Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings. The applicant has provided the required site plan for indoor survey. The proposed zoning change generally follows, follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the long-range growth plan and the priority growth areas. The Albany County Attorney's Office has comments about that. And the applicant has adequately addressed all potential impacts. And pursuant to chapter five, section five, the Albany County zoning resolution, the applicant has provided the required notice by close of sign publication and certified mailing. Staff analysis, the applicant has addressed the potential impacts this zoning change may cause and has provided a complete application. This property is currently agricultural, changed to rural residential, is compatible with existing land use and surrounding properties. The applicant wants to subdivide their property into two lots, which requires the five-acre lot to be zoned rural residential. This forty-nine point nine-nine acre parcel is partially in the aquifer protection overlay zone, which does not allow subdivision, subdivision smaller than thirty-five acres. However, the five-acre lot would be outside of the APOZ with the rest of the acreage continuing to comply with the aquifer protection really, regulations. It is the planning department's perspective that the zoning change complies with county regulations concerning zoning and the APOZ. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff recommendation was to approve the Flutie zoning change application, LUC-zero-eight-two-two, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis. Findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report. And the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Flutie zoning change application, LUC-zero-eight-two-two, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions for Joe this morning?
I do, Commissioner Barra. Joe, did, I'm sure you guys looked at this in light of the boundary changes that are being proposed in the cap update. Have you done that and does this still exist outside the APOZ if?
Yeah, I believe the boundary at this spot is the same. I don't believe it's being moved.
Thank you, Joe. Still, still the question I had.
Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion for item twenty-four.
I move that, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Eva. I move we approve the Flutie zoning change application, LUC-dash-zero-eight-dash-two-two, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, finding of facts and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the Flutie zoning change application. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Item twenty-five, present for consideration, an amended plat for block two, lot six, Y Foster Estates. Good morning, David.
Good morning. So Mr. Flutie. Larry Knopf has requested a boundary line adjustment for block two, lot six, of the Wyatt Foster Estates. Where the boundary line adjustment occurs within a plat and subdivision, that requires amended plat, which is to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. The amended plat has been reviewed for all the necessary information that's required to be included and your request is, your approval is requested.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David? I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve an amended plat for block two, lot six, Y Foster Estates, incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
The move in second that we approve the amended plat for block two, lot six, Y Foster Estates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-six, present for consideration, renewal of the twenty twenty-two mobile home park license for Blue Sky Trailer Court. Joe?
Yeah, so they turned in their application, paid the fees, and everything is good to go on our end.
This was a late application.
It was, yeah.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I move we approve item twenty-six as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the renewal of the twenty twenty-two mobile home park license for Blue Sky Trailer Court. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-seven, present for consideration, directing staff to publish amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to conditional roof permits and zoning district amendments and schedule a public hearing. David?
Yeah, thank you. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution. This is a project that they've been working on for a few months now. The chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission and Matt Ayers have taken the brunt of the work on this. What this will effectively do is it makes a few modifications to the conditional use permit. It also changes our zone change process a little bit, renames it to a zoning district amendment, and then impacts some of the definitions that have to do with those. We've also made some other just minor amendments throughout the document. The, the purpose really was to separate the zoning district amendment process from our other land use applications with the Supreme Court cases that came out recently and just the way that we interpret the use of the comprehensive plan with our land use regulations. This was just, this separation, I think, was needed and necessary. It just makes our, our regulations a little bit more clear. What we requested at this point is to schedule a public hearing and, and also to publish the amendments. Matt Ayers has actually went over a few, or went over this with a fine tooth comb and there, I think there are a few more just typos and those types of errors that, that we want to make, make changes to before we get it published. But Matt, did you want to kind of add to this?
Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Commissioner Barra and Commissioner. Just for the sake of sufficiency of the record, this was a, a rather busy draft when it was in planning and zoning, so now that it's in a cleaner version, there were just a few clerical changes, which I felt needed to be made. Just going through the page numbers on two-two conditional use permit, there needs to be added that between stating a conditional use and also changing of to for in the second sentence of conditional use permit definition, so without the need for, instead of without the need of. Further, under land use development. there needs to be added that between stating a conditional use and also changing of to four in the second sentence of conditional use permit definition. So without the need for, instead of without the need of. Further, under land use development permit on the next page, page two dash three, removing the A before, in between four and certain. So it would read, a permit required for certain land uses. On two, page two dash five, it looks like we had an addition which doesn't actually accomplish anything. It just changed industrial to industrial, so that could be removed. And then on page three dash nineteen, we carried over the notification requirements from our current conditional use permit to the zoning district amendment. So for contents of notice, we need to add a D, so it's and instead of and, all mailed and publication. Capitalized Board of County Commissioners, number two, mail in the, it looks like, third sentence. And then moving on to the next page, three dash twenty, we just left out a clause, didn't get copied over quite correctly. So under signage, it would need to be the application shall obtain at the time of the application submission, one, and then after that, in parentheses, the number one, and then sign to be placed along and clearly visible from a publicly used road. And also moving the pluralization of sign in the last sentence of signage, number five. Similar, oh, under number F, closing out a space in between two oh two and C in parentheses. And that is it. Is there any questions on the substance of these amendments or the impetus thereof?
No question on the substance. I know, Matt, you know, I'm the proofreader, and so you got all my changes that I had noted here are all the need for some changes as far as typos and all. And looking through this document, the biggest change was changing the planning office to planning department. So it makes it sound a lot more official and all, but anyway, that was the biggest change going all the way through this document. So I want to just commend the planning department, you, Matt, and anyone else who was in, had the P and Z or the hours put towards making these amendments and changes into a better piece to work with. So better regulation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Abara.
Commissioner Richardson or Commissioner Gosar, any comments, questions, anything?
Commissioner Abara, I can't remember if I heard Matt say on three five, there's two planning departments right next to each other at the very top of the page.
Yeah, it's repeated on three five. Planning department twice.
Yeah, I think I.
I think you did say that.
I think I missed saying it, but I did have it.
Thank you. Great, great work. I appreciate it, guys, and thanks for being, getting us in compliance so quickly to some court decisions, hopefully.
I can have a motion.
Let me get to that. I move that we direct the staff to publish the amendments and schedule a public hearing on December sixth for the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to conditional use permits and zoning district amendments and schedule a public here.
Second.
Been moved in second that we direct the staff to publish the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to conditional use permits and zoning district amendments and to schedule a public hearing. Or what did we say, December?
Six.
Six, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you again to all for the hard work. Item twenty-eight, present for approval, termination of award bid to White Energy Motors furnishing delivery of three full-size four doors, four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drives four utility vehicles with upgraded suspensions pursuant to police package specifications. Sheriff?
Yes, I'm asking the commission to terminate the award bid to White Energy Motors. This bid was awarded them in December of twenty twenty-one, at which they were supposed to deliver vehicles by July of twenty twenty-two. Prior to July twenty twenty-two, they said that they were having some supply chain issues that vehicles would be delivered in September of twenty twenty-two, which we agreed to the extension. We were contacted in September and said that the order was never made and that their supplier had informed them that they would still honor twenty twenty-two orders, but not give us a concrete date on when we received those vehicles and that twenty twenty-two orders would then be billed at twenty twenty-three pricing. For the most part is a breach of our contract. And so I had informed them that we would not be going through that. Because it wasn't what was agreed upon in the bid that was awarded. So now I'm asking for your official approval to terminate that contract.
Commissioners, any questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we terminate the award bid to White Energy Motors as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second that we terminate the award bid to White Motors, White Energy Motors. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's a big move.
Yeah. Item twenty-nine, present for approval, invitation to bid for purchase and delivery of three full-size four doors, four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drives four utility vehicle with upgraded suspension pursuant to police package specifications and direct the clerk to advertise. Sheriff.
Since we didn't get our vehicles the first time and they're going to cost us twenty twenty-three prices, we thought it would be best to just send it out to bid and see if we could get the most competitive pricing from dealerships in Wyoming at that twenty twenty-three price. So I'm asking you to approve that bid so the clerk can advertise before we try to get our vehicles and our trade.
Commissioners, do I?
I've moved we approve item twenty-nine as presented.
Second.
It's been approved, been moved in second that we approved item twenty-nine as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Go get yourself some vehicles.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item thirty, award the bid for juvenile treatment providers to provide substance abuse treatment and individual and or group therapy for participants in the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Programs Integrated Juvenile Treatment Program, IJTP, and Support and Integration Program. Support, a program, SIP, to foundations counseling and consulting of Wyoming LLC. Heather, good morning.
Good morning. So one short month ago, we put out for bid for our RFPs for juvenile programs, and so this is to present for approval. Or excuse me, present to award that foundations has secured the bid for the Integrated Juvenile Treatment Program and our Pre-Entry Support and Integration Program.
Thank you. Any questions for Heather this morning, commissioners? Okay, I would entertain a motion, please.
I move we approve item thirty as presented.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve item thirty as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item thirty-one, present for approval, the contract between the Albany County Board of Commissioners and Foundations Counseling Consulting of Wyoming LLC for the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Programs Integrated Juvenile Treatment Program, IJTP, and Support and Integration Program, SIP, from November first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, with the option to extend for one additional year at the rate of four thousand dollars per month. Heather?
Thank you, commissioners. This is just to request approval of that contract with foundations for the juvenile drug court and the integration program to provide both group and individual sessions to participants and family.
Any questions?
I move we approve item thirty-one as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second that we approve item thirty-one as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item thirty-two, award the bid for the juvenile treatment providers to provide substance abuse treatment and individual and or group therapy for participants in the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Programs Youth Empowerment Program, YEP, to foundations counseling consulting of Wyoming LLC. Heather?
Again, our commissioners requesting to award the bid for our empowerment program, which is our pre-adjudication program with juveniles for foundations counseling to provide treatment services.
Commissioner Abara?
Yes.
Heather, could you tell me how many organizations bid on this? Was, was there more than one?
Yes, thank you for asking. We actually had three bids and were able to go through an interview process with the panel and then selected foundations.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Gosar, just so you know, some of the applicants, well, at least two of the applicants were very close as far as what they could provide and the services and their quality. And so either one would have been a great choice. We went with foundations, having known them since they currently provide this service for us. So we feel like it's a great move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Abara. I move we approve item thirty-two as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve item thirty-two as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And one last one, Heather, present for approval, the contract between the Albany County Board of Commissioners, Foundations Counseling Consulting of Wyoming LLC for the juvenile treatment providers to provide substance abuse treatment and individual and or group therapy for participants in the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Programs Youth Empowerment Program, Program, YEP, from November first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, with the option to extend for one additional year at the rate of four thousand dollars.
Thank you again, commissioners, to wrap up on presenting for approval, the contract with foundations for our treatment services for our empowerment program.
Thank you. Commissioners, can I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve item thirty-three as presented.
Second.
It moved in second that we approve item thirty-three as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item thirty-four, present for approval, application for catering permit for Delancey Enterprises LLC due businesses held on wheels package liquors for UW event, a tribute to steamboat, rodeo, dance, and reception for homecoming at UW Hanson Teaching Arena on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, from five to nine PM. Kayla?
Good morning, commissioners. This is an application for a catering permit from Cindy Delancey. They have a package liquor store in Laramie County. In the packet, there is approval from Laramie County to, for her to use her license here in Albany County. So that's basically the opposite of what we did with the government. Their license is held in Laramie County. So we get the funds for the catering permit and then they can get permission from Laramie County for them to use their license. So everything looks to be in order.
That'll be a heck of an event.
Probably.
I move that we approve item thirty-four as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second that we approved the application for the catering permit for Delancey Enterprises. Anybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on down since we have moved, removed the executive session. We're at item thirty-nine.
You forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, item thirty-five. I'm sorry, Kayla, come on. Bailey, come on.
All right, so late last week, I was sending an email by U.S. Treasury regarding what they're calling the local assistance and tribal consistency fund. From what I'm finding, this is coming down from ARPA funding originally. So it is federal funds, grant funds. However, the way they went about distributing these funds relates to PILT. So there's a combination of two different things there. As I was reading this, I was like, no way, we're not getting funds. Then sure, we're getting funds. So for FY twenty-two, our allocation is one million eighty-six dollars, or sorry, one million eighty-six thousand eighty-eight dollars and forty-six cents for fiscal year twenty-three, the same amount. So a total of two million one hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents. So.
Let me see the amount.
Yes, two million one hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents. I met with Tracy and Justin being gone at Waco last week. I met with them yesterday morning and we decided to go ahead and put it on your agenda for today just as a discussion and mainly to get a feel if you guys want to accept these. Because then Tracy will go ahead and then request, request the funds. It'll come in two different payments. One will come this year, one will come next year, but at least we could start collecting interest on that. This, it is coming down from ARPA, however, it's different than ARPA. There's very few rules, however, there still are some rules with these, this funding. One of those rules is no lobbying whatsoever. And then the other one is there's still a few uniform guidance policies that we have to take into account for. So those are our main federal funding rules that we have to follow. I'm sure one of them is the no alcohol purchase, but things like that. The, I read through the guidance, it's only seven pages long. I am sure there's more to come considering ARPA's is like over fifty pages long and they just keep adding to it. At this point, my recommendation to you would be to accept the funds if that's what you wish to do. And then we slow down on this one. We don't, there's no need to rush this funding. There is no end date for this funding. This funding does have reporting requirements, though. So as the longer we hold on to the money, the lot, the longer I have to keep reporting on it. But I am sure there are more rules to come because there always are. And I'd kind of like to wait and kind of see what those rules are really going to be before we move on any of it. So I would like to take this a much slower process than what we've done with ARPA. It's just my opinion. So do whatever you would like.
And Bailey, is there a deadline on the acceptance?
The deadline on the acceptance is January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
We have some time.
Yes, it was Tracy's recommendation that if we accept the funds, we can get it within four to five days and then we can at least collect interest on it by having it sitting on. But you are welcome to sit on. Any thought?
Any questions for Bailey, commissioners?
This is fantastic. Two million bucks. I'm, I'm ready to accept it. Especially with the idea that it doesn't have to be spent right away, unlike maybe our, our funding. So we could be real deliberative about what we might be able to do with this money.
Yeah, do you have a sense of how restrictive and kludgy-clatgy and esoteric if the, the use might be, or is it, or will we have some freedom to deal with the needs that Albany County might have?
At this point, you have every freedom that you have want, except for the few that I mentioned, the lobbying and all the few things that we have to follow federal funding wise anyways. Some of the things that they list out here is provision for health services, educational services, court services, capital expenditures on the court facilities, equipment, infrastructure investments, road and bridges, water, sewer, long-term economic development, general government operations, personnel, administrative facilities, and these can be matching funds for other federal grants. Now, I mentioned these. Now, there's the other thing that it is.
That's never.
That it doesn't have to follow is Davis Bacon for building. So we do not have to follow Davis Bacon as. That it doesn't have to follow is Davis Bacon for building, so we do not have to follow Davis Bacon as long as the funds are entirely, like, as long as any federal funds is entirely from this, or it's some from our general fund. If there's any other federal funds involved, we do have to follow Davis Bacon, and then NEBA, we don't have to follow that as well. This has opened a huge door. The reason I want to take this, I was on a call yesterday. I believe Tracy was on it too. The things they keep putting out there are big projects. I think that's kind of their intention with this money. I know with ARPA, we've done a little here, a little there, a little there, which is great, but I think kind of the intention of this is to kind of do bigger projects. So that's part of the reason why I'd like to slow this one down, also with the election coming up. Our small and busy, so kind of all, we there could be a change in a lot of this, so. That's my recommendation for you guys. However, we can do whatever you'd like. If there's things you need me to start looking into more, I certainly can, but this is going to be something that's going to continue to be on my radar, at least till they finally get things settled. I feel like ARPA, they finally got stuff settled, but we did move forward on stuff, which is fine. But I think with this, it would be nice to make sure, yep, they're really good with all the things that they put out there. They're not changing anything before we move forward on something.
You mean on projects, but not necessarily on accepting.
No, no, accepting the funds is, that does have the timeline of the January thirty-first, and that's different, like, I mean, I, I think, and I could be wrong, is whether they come down with a few more rules or not, this would still be good money for our community and that we could do some good things with it. But to, yeah, figure out the project where the money's actually going to go towards, I would recommend slowing down.
So it's local and tribal?
Yes.
Is it called local and tribal?
Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. Every county, I believe every county in the state were awarded these funds. It does vary on how much they were awarded, though. Mostly depends on how much federal land they have.
Sure.
Because they.
Kind of like it's tied to the PILT.
It definitely is.
Any other questions?
Commissioners, if we miss the January thirty-first deadline, we are not able to have either tranche of money for us, so that allows us, if we do it before January thirty-first, we can get the two million bucks. If we don't, then we're, we're out of, of the game there.
So this is a last-minute discussion item, so probably we would need something on our.
I can certainly put it on your next meeting agenda if you'd like as a.
I would love that.
Please do do that, Bailey, and I appreciate the recommendation to move slowly because we know everything's constantly changing the rules.
Well, and I just, I mean, with the CARES Act funding, with the ARPA funding, all this funding, I keep learning from it, which is a good thing, and I can see myself getting quite a few emails after bringing it to your attention today.
You're thinking.
Yeah, so everybody's going to want, and I think that's something that, you know, if you take a little slower, we really think this through, because, okay, yeah, it's two million dollars, but it only goes, like, only goes so far, and if there's a big project you guys have in mind, let's make sure we're really talking about that, so. Because I will put it on your next.
Super. Thank you, Bailey. All right, no executive session. Could I have a motion to group this month's vouchers? Oh, sorry, this month's vouchers, or last month's vouchers.
I move that we approve the vouchers for September twenty-two.
Second.
It moved and seconded that we approved the vouchers for September twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All this is approved. All right. See no other business before this condition. I adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.